Yeah, and PD has added a bunch of people down recently too.
The game warden was supposed to be there, but he just dropped off.
It's changed.
They don't even have a date yet.
I'm so frustrated with them.
They've been pretty good with us so far.
I'll do that.
Sorry, Jason.
Good.
Getting there, looking at the here.
Okay, I will put your on tap. Yeah, I sent you the roster there. Yeah, we went through. So I'll send that to you. God, like a meeting or something, that might be the best place to have everyone there. Yeah, just let me know. If we can't get them, we'll just list them. There was one.
What are you talking about? Oh, yeah, it's stupid.
All right, I've got ten o'clock, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to work.
President, I would thank you so much, this beautiful body, and we thank you for the ring. Ask you to send us more. I ask you bless this meeting as we take care of the county's business. And I ask you to do things for every family representative, they keep them safe, have a home away in these night. We pray.
President, this is a flag of the United States of America. And to read out of it, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law. I want a Texas flag, I believe it leads to me, Texas, one state, under God, for all indivisible.
Good morning, everybody, thank you all for coming. At this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting, each speech will be limited to three minutes.
Hello.
Yeah, I just wanted to make known what happened now with the golf course last week. We had thirty-six kids come from Gordon County. And we had the very first Texas golf seminar for this. It's called First Green. And it was very educational, the kids had a blast, they loved it. They found out what the difference in dirt and sand is. They had a very various, there was four stations. And they went from station to station and they learned something new about the environment, about conservation, about watering, and about getting along. And the different things that they can go into in life by doing this. And learning or going in this direction as far as their occupation. But it was, it was a, I enjoyed it because the kids were so excited about it. They had lunch out there and it was an all morning deal. And it, it's really a very good thing. And we were the very first ones in the state of Texas to be recognized for this first green to come to the golf course. But it wasn't just about golf, it was about conservation. And it was very beneficial. I wanted to tell y'all, you should be proud.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
That is cool. I need to make it, good things about it. All right, anybody else not on the agenda? All right, Court, discuss and consider increasing project schedule and staffing.
I submitted CPIF eight. The other, I don't know where there was, on the twentieth of September. It was for reimbursement of five hundred and fifty-six thousand, thirty-seven dollars and forty-four cents will be what we will get reimbursed. So that will put us meeting what we budgeted plus a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one point four seven point four. If it gets processed and sent back to us this year, in twenty twenty-three. I have been probably at Thorn and Megan's side because I keep being on my line, are you get it? Are you working on it? Are you, she even emailed me this morning, said, I'm at home sick, but I will work on it. She also said that the projects have to be completed three months before June twenty twenty-five. I re, I emailed her back to make sure because our project end date on our reports and on the one that text dots in us says August twenty twenty-five. And she said, yes, the director said April twenty twenty-five, they must be completed.
April first.
This is April twenty twenty-five, so.
So we'll have to have them done by the end of twenty-four.
Unless you can work really fast in the first four months of twenty twenty-five.
We got those two.
What, this twenty-four?
I did submit four completions. So don't forget, as you're completing them, let me know so I can submit the proper documentation to show that they're completed on the project.
Do I, I don't see it happening. Maybe.
And she didn't really give any reasoning or explanation as to why it has to be done so much earlier than our end date. But when I asked for verification that, are you sure it's due, you know, it needs to be done then, and she said, yes. So.
Proper processing, all of that part of the county. I wouldn't want that. All right, anything else?
Court, consider certification of additional revenues in the form of proceeds from add fuel. And that was an amount of fifty thousand dollars.
And there was supposed to also, he's not here, is he? He was supposed to ask y'all to pin on the agenda to discuss putting in his next class reserves. So we can put down the next one, so we can add that to there for the runway project.
Okay.
And I'll make the motion, we accept the certification of additional revenues for proceeds from add fuel.
So, all in favor? Okay, Court, consider certification of additional revenues in the form of fund received from Johnson County for purchase of two thousand nine John Deere tractor in amount of eighty-five thousand dollars.
We finally received that in, and there will be a budget amendment later on to place that in, it's fifty-seven point one.
So, all in favor? All right, now, fun stuff. Court, designate October first through the seventh, two twenty twenty-three as National Four-H, Four-H Week in Texas. So, do y'all want to speak before we do the proclamation?
That's okay.
Absolutely. Those jerseys are different, that's cool.
That sounds different.
Yeah? I like it. All right, coming up here, I'll let you know that the lights on the courthouse are green and white for Four-H.
I'm just gonna kind of turn it over, this is part of our, this year's twenty-three, twenty-four officer team. And I'm just gonna turn it over to them and let them talk.
Ohio Cooper Calhoun, I just wanted to thank y'all for the opportunity to, Rob's team come and speak here. And so Texas Four-H members have always been proud of the communities they call home, whether they live in cities, towns, or rural areas. Four-Hers make their communities better year-round. But they couldn't do it without, without help. So on behalf of the Scory County Four-H Club, we want to thank each of you for your support of the program. As we celebrate National Four-H Week, we'd like to highlight a few things our members were involved in last year.
Last year, our club had one hundred and thirty-two members and twenty-two parent volunteers and coaches that helped coach youth for contests, served as mentors, and supported the activities of our club. Without the support of our volunteers, we would not have the successful program that we do in Scory County.
Youth in our club are learning valuable leadership skills through project involvement and running for elected office positions on the county, district, and state level. Here is a recap of the leadership positions our youth held this last year. Nine Scory County Office Team members, one State Four-H Council member, two District Two Council members, two District Two leadership, two District Two Junior Leadership Lab counselors, one State STEM Ambassador, one State Shooting Sports Ambassador, one Healthy Texas Youth Ambassador, two Food Challenge Ambassador, two Food Challenge Coaches, sorry, and one STEM Project Leader.
Members in our club participated in seventeen different projects last year, including food and nutrition, photography, fashion, livestock projects, horse club, anthropology, STEM, and shooting sports. We invite you to view the handout we will provide you today to see how many youth participate in each project. A big part of our Four-H Club motto is to make the best of it, their hands to larger service. Our club participates in ten service projects, from securing school supply donations for those in need, sending cards to elderly on Christmas, making blessing bags with essential items for our community, and supporting our local senior center by making items for May Day, this for the dessert option, serving meals at May Day and providing refreshments for monthly events, and serving at the annual volunteer banquet.
Four-H builds skills in us to prepare us for our future support and support us in our college endeavors. This year, we are very proud that we had three Four-H members that received a total of sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars in scholarships. Through our Four-H Texas Foundation and Texas Extension Educators Association to assist them with their college education.
We want to close today by highlighting some outstanding accomplishments by our members in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year. Members received a total of sixty-one thousand, five hundred dollars in scholarships. We competed in two national contests with a senior food challenge team at the National Food Challenge Contest and the Great American Seafood Cookoff. We are the proud home of the twenty twenty-two National Food Champion Food Challenge Team. The same team placed third in the Great American Seafood Cookoff in New Orleans, Louisiana. During the twenty twenty-two San Antonio Livestock Exposition Competitive Competitions, we had one member receive the Food Challenge Champion Title and one member receive the Sale Shootout Champion Title, with both members receiving a ten thousand dollar scholarship. We had one member place first in the main dish category of the state food show.
Thank you again for your support for our Scory County Four-H program, as we continue to strive to make the best of it.
So much. That's cool. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and read this proclamation. They'll do a whole lot better than I did, I don't think. All right, now, some Four-H, Four-H Week, see, I already messed it up. National Four-H Week Proclamation. Whereas Scory County Commissioners' Court is proud to honor the Texas Four-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for a hundred and sixteen years of providing experience-based education to youth throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for all youth through their head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas the program's more than five hundred and fifty thousand urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from eight to eighteen come from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than thirty thousand volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout its proud history, the Four-H program has developed positive role models countless Texans through its innovative, inspiring programs and continues to put character and instill the values that have made our state strong. And so now therefore, I make the motion that it be resolved, the Scory County Commissioners' Court hereby designate October first through seventh, twenty twenty-three as National Four-H Week in Texas and commend the Four-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made the program a success. All in favor? All right, so we're gonna sign this, and they look like they have goodies.
Food, that's a good part.
Yes.
Thank you, absolutely. Thank you. Oh, y'all wanna come in? You need to hold up for a shot. Am I in it?
No, you're good.
Yeah, you're in. In the middle. All right. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
I'm still in check.
Good job, Bill.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, let me, if you hang on just a second, I'll give you a side copy of the confirmation as well. And so, if y'all go by the courthouse at night, it'll be green and white this week. That's cool. We'll change it next week to pink for cancer awareness. Court, consider resolution to nominate members of the, to the appraisal district board of directors. Do y'all have any contact with anybody? No? Okay, I've reached out to one, I haven't heard back. So, may I think about it? May or may not, which is understandable. So, we need to do this by the sixteenth. So if y'all would start reaching out to some folks and see if we can get, uh, if they're not gonna be able to force this term. So we'll have a meeting next week and come up with somebody. Court, discuss and consider moving funds from Texas Class to capital expenditures to purchase EMS replacement automated CPR device. Sir, we got Commissioners' Court, we got a really good deal on automated CPR device called the Lucas. It helps with quality CPR. So I'd like to move some money out of Texas Class and harder to put in capital for that purchase. We're just purchasing one.
Originally, it was like nineteen, I got it for a little over fifteen.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Hold on, babe. Let's go to the agenda on that. Court, discuss and consider moving funds from Texas Class to the sheriff's budget to purchase emergency medical dispatcher software training and support for an EMD system and upgrade for EMS dispatching services. I'll let y'all discuss that.
The engine commissioners, we're, we've been working on this project for many years in order to get emergency medical dispatchers trained and certified. There's, it's just been too costly over the years to do anything with. Lots of education goes into it. We tried a company out of Fort Worth and it was very costly and wasn't doable. And so we finally, Savannah and I worked together and finally found something to go. Sheriff felt like it was a good thing as well, so he approved it, and then so here we are. The COG is gonna do like a matching grant as well. And so I would like to ask the court to give authorization to the treasurer and auditor to move fifteen thousand from Texas EMS Texas Class into the sheriff's capital to purchase the software. And Savannah can tell you more about the software than I can, but, and then they're getting the additional revenue from, from West Texas COG. So it's a partnership with the COG, with the sheriff's department and EMS to get us emergency medical dispatchers trained and certified, which we've never had in Scory County. So it's a very exciting opportunity if you guys allow us to do this. And the dispatchers to get that training. It's a huge benefit for pre-hospital dispatching and pre-hospital caring in Scory County, yes, sir.
And we're one of the only counties in our COG district, we are the only county in our COG district that actually provides pre-arrival instructions. So when anybody's calling in for a medical emergency that would require EMS, we're able to coach them through the steps that they need to take to make the patient the best that they can be while they wait on EMS's arrival. What we currently have in place is a guideline, so it has very general and generic, almost, almost common sense-like things in place. But this protocol is more detailed and is more, when you're hearing someone scream that they just found their baby unresponsive, it's telling you step by step, you need to tell them this, you need to tell them this. Because it is, it is, it does get difficult when you're listening to those type of calls to maintain your focus on what steps you need to tell them while trying to maintain control of that call. Included in this, at no extra cost, they're also providing us fire and police scripts that we can use for disturbances, for house fires, structural fires. And all EMS, PD, and fire, they're all customizable so that way we can adjust them to be specific for Scory County. So if we have a vehicle accident, we can plug in there specifically, notify Adland DPS at this phone number, notify, if we need to notify sheriff of a certain incident, we can plug in specifically who we need to contact in that scripting so that there's no steps overlooked or missed in the system.
Anything that makes it easier on y'all, that makes it, that makes us respond better, I'm all for.
Quality patient care starts with dispatch.
Yeah.
Are truly the first responders, when somebody calls nine one one. So you guys give EMS and fire and whatever, we all, we all ask for the proper equipment for first responders. This is dispatch's turn to request that, that software to make their job easier.
All in favor? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'll come by after I get it, I'm curious.
Pretty cool.
Very good.
We could use it as a trial period. Do you think Jeff hurts himself?
I feel pretty good down myself.
Insert a train. And then have the body, we'll find it. I'll remind you that we're on camera. I'm not part of that. All right, Court, consider and approve the use of the construction manager at risk method contracting as authorized by Subchapter F, Chapter twenty-two sixty-nine of the Texas Government Code as a project delivery method that provides the best value to the county for the construction of the health department building project. And also the EMS will do both of them at the same time. So. Yeah. We had a meeting again last week with Kenny Burns and county attorney and the committee to build the health department and EMS. And Kenny believes that the best out of the six different methods that we have, construction manager at risk, it would be the best for us going forward on those projects. So we've had our attorney that we hired to draw all these up, she's, she would be the one that we could draw these contracts up. So we're at that next stage, this is the next stage. We don't know, Kenny's given us an idea of what the cost is gonna be, but we won't know what the cost is gonna be until we start moving forward on it. So we're at that point.
And that's, that's the issue I have with not knowing.
And we can't know.
I understand that, but.
If we, if we don't do this part, then everything stops.
So, please, uh, please give your idea.
Of what he, what he thinks the cost would be. I think it was a total of six million or a little over six million. But could have come in less, and if it does, and then that's great, but we won't know for sure.
Did he say that his, he thought the cost, his cost, what he figured was gonna be within five percent?
Yeah. Yeah, but still, we don't go forward, we have no idea for sure if that's accurate. Well, sometimes we're looking at, we've got three point two, I believe, in the, well, a little less than that, in the ARPA funds. So.
We have right now, three point four two one oh five seven forty-two, two to penny. We have to move forty-five thousand out of that to cover that engineer thing that we did, our Burns Architecture one.
Yeah.
That's forty-two, forty-five thousand. That's what we have. I will say, just FYI, interest rates are already starting to come down. We are, this month's interest was a little bit less than last month's, and so keep that in mind.
Okay.
But it's still good, right?
Right. So potentially, that should come from, a chunk of that could come from pilot, pilot payments over the next several years. Now we've set that aside, where that's not the worst tax rate, and that potentially could go towards the building nerves we did. Now we've set that aside, where that's not the worst tax rate, and that potentially could go towards the building nerves that we did one after the other, or spread it out over the next few years. How long did he say that it would, a year, year and a half to actually do construction?
Yes.
Looking at, this wouldn't even, we wouldn't, it would be spring before we even got as far as this, getting all the answers for, for construction manager at risk.
I wonder, we can already, I mean, if we were to just move forward with something else?
We'll, we'll move forward with those funds.
That'd be a different topic, but I'm just saying, when we started this out at three million and now we've already doubled that, that's what, I'm just, that's where I was asking you for, where are we gonna get this?
Like I said, that's, if you get them out of the pilot payments or, you know. So the pilot payments that we set aside that we're gonna get over the next few years?
From the wind farm that would come up?
Yeah, wind solar batteries. Sixteen million, yeah, and over the next three years, it's about nearly four million.
But I've probably set that aside, so when it comes to payments, then it wouldn't cost us as much because of depreciation on it, right?
But that money will still be there, sitting there. It, it's to keep from putting it against, it was, we set it aside to keep from going against tax rate, because once the depreciation hits at that time, it'll be more than three point five percent. But that's money that we'd be able to use in other areas. Can I say something?
Yes. Judge Commissioner? So we ask, go back to ask why, right? Why do we start the project in the beginning? Why are we even doing this? From my memory serves me correctly, it was because of our buildings falling apart. We've gotta do something with our buildings.
Yeah, but we also have equipment and everything that's fallen apart.
Well, I get it, 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 I'm just, that makes sense. Kinda goes back to our budget talk that we had the other day, but I still think it goes back to that. We have enough money to build the health unit, we don't have enough money to do both, we will think in the future to come. But I think there's other options for EMS, but we do have enough money to build the health unit, which has solved that problem. So, and if we don't go forward here, then I would sure like to know as, as a department head, what we, what are we gonna do? Are we just gonna let it sit there? What are we gonna do with it? I guess buy road and bridge equipment and other capital equipment that we may need across the county.
Or we just let it sit? Our funds can't be used for equipment as far as I...
Okay, so I, I just kinda would remind you to go back, the health units, we've all got issues, all of us across the board. Health unit, I think, has got the most as far as structural wise, am I correct? And so, I don't know, that's just a quick reminder from me.
When we started this process, the use of those funds, the idea was to give it, give the committee that we put together, the idea was to get the biggest bang, long-term, out of these dollars that we can get. And that's going towards infrastructure. Equipment comes and goes, and we can't use it towards equipment anyway, and we can build a plan going forward to replace equipment as we go. It's a whole lot easier to build a plan for equipment than it is for buildings. If we don't do this now with these funds for one or the other or both as we go forward, when are we gonna have the opportunity to do this? And we might, you know, if we build up those funds over ten years to do that, but what's the cost gonna be in ten years when we get there? This is an opportunity to fix some problems that we have infrastructural wise, that we don't normally get this opportunity.
But you're also doubling the amount that we set aside too, our ARPA funds.
We, that's an idea, but we don't know that for sure.
Can you not repair the health department less than six million dollars?
I don't know that, that, yeah, you probably could, but with the structure that's there, the, the... What is it I'm thinking of? Foundation is shot, you know, why, why would you, why would you repair something that the foundation is shot?
Do we know that for sure?
Yes.
And then?
It was two point, two point something for the health unit.
It's not the Hostess Museum for us, it's two point something, and my foundation is shot.
Something like that, it was four something for the ambulance. And then EMS, they got grown with their hat, so we need to have a plan going forward to get down. Why can't we pursue building EMS office within the health department and their, their...
I don't know that the EMS would be, the current EMS would be a good place for health department, right there on College Avenue. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I personally haven't stepped in there, so I can't speak to that, but also we have, I mean, our structural wise is different, you know? Having patients come in for us to check or give immunizations is totally different from, I know what their structural wise is, so. And I know that they need things to be done with EMS, that a wall is kinda shifting, and so their building needs just as much help as I told you.
I disagree. I think that the design of the ambulance building the way we have currently set up is, you'd have to essentially gut the front entry and restructure the flow of how that, based on what their needs are in the health unit. So you're looking at some remodel costs there, and you're still, you're still only have one bathroom, so you're really not solving the bathroom issue that they currently have. Other than if you, to restructure to where the staff uses the apartment bathrooms, and then, you know, maybe the people could come in through the side door.
And then once you do all of that, you have to go ADA. Once you touch any part of ADA, the whole building has to be ADA.
Yeah, we don't, our, our building is ADA compliant on the outside and on the inside except for the bathroom, so you'd have to restructure the bathroom. So definitely some options, but you definitely look at some expensive remodel costs, in my opinion. But we won't ever know.
Just that it was two point one for the health unit, is that to build a new health unit or to fix the problems?
That was a loose number, I...
A loose number?
Yeah.
But was that?
Two point three for the health unit and four point three for EMS.
Yeah, two, two point three.
But that's to build a new structure.
Those are estimated costs by our architect.
And we won't know for sure what the true numbers are until we get further into process. This is not just an initial architecture.
I was just wanting to make sure that I was on the same page, because I was thinking, y'all were talking about repairing the building they were in, and then jumped to that two point one, and I was like...
Yeah, it's two point three numbers, right? Now, so again, estimated cost.
Estimated cost, yeah.
Same as four point?
Four point three.
And this isn't to build, this is to go and build the buildings tomorrow. This is to get a construction manager at risk method of contracting, so that we, once, at that point, that's when we start, once we get that person in place, that's when we start finding out numbers. They start gathering that information for us at that point.
Will it? So just a question. If y'all move forward with this step, will the next step, will, you know, when we did the roofs, one of the things that Greg did when we had that huge roof project, was he brought forth different costs and plans at that time. And then y'all could choose the way you wanted to move forward of that, will that be similar to that?
Similar to that, yes, ma'am.
They're on our side, they're on our side.
Everybody says they're on our side when they win our, win our money, I'm just wondering what they, what if they're gonna bring other costs to them, that's...
They will bring other costs and contractors and all the things for the court to decide on what correction to go.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know, is, is there gonna be different values?
Different, yeah, whether to use wood or whether to use metal, stuff, what contractor to use, what contractor...
And at the current rate of materials and all of that.
Yeah, whether our designs are even functional to build, all that, yeah.
And what did they say that was gonna cost, that was it, three hundred thousand?
They, that's the engineering and all of that that's included in there, that's already included in the price that he listed out. If you say no to these, it essentially kills these projects, and we have three point two million dollars that we need to figure out what we're gonna do with. I disagree with doing anything that's gonna go towards, you know, road and bridge or anything like that, that, like equipment or roads, because you've already got a grant in place that we've had for the last three years that we've got another two years on that can be used for that.
They can't buy our equipment?
They can't buy our equipment?
No.
Which personally I think is kinda self-worshiping, if you go that route, go forward, putting just equipment for road and bridge. Because it benefits road and bridge, these two buildings benefit the entire community.
The roads, the roads benefit the community.
They do, but you've already got a grant for that.
I have a problem building a two point three health unit, and it only takes in twenty-seven thousand dollars a year.
It's not about income, it's about the impact on the community. We're not in the business to make money, we're in the business to provide a service to the community, and they could go to a hospital and get the same stuff. Well, what's your pleasure?
I'll, I'll go ahead and agree to this to get the exact process of what's in the cost, after that, I can guarantee you that.
We won't be nothing like about the video, but...
Well, yeah, I understand that.
So is that a motion, are you making a motion?
Yeah.
On F and G?
Yes.
I'll second. All in favor? All opposed? You're in favor, yeah?
No, he's opposed.
You're opposed, okay.
It's three to one.
Okay. All right, Court to consider approve amendment to the standard form of agreement between owner and architect, and architect, Burns Architects LLC, commence Part Two of the agreement for design services related to the Scurry County EMS station and health department project building. This is basically so that he can work with the construction manager at risk, basically, if I understood that correctly.
Yeah, that's what I understood.
So since y'all moved, since y'all approved you the first one, this is the second step of that first one.
It's...
To allow him to go on?
Correct.
To do what you just approved to do.
Yes, ma'am.
This is actually, they'll put, that way we can have actual pictures and for this.
Without approval of this, then there's really...
Yeah, it just kills everything all over again.
I'll make a motion to prove that, too.
All in favor? Court to discuss and consider jury selection plan presented by the District Clerk's Office. We have a jury selection plan that is not required, but it's required.
It, it basically just solidifies what we've been doing for years. It just names the district clerk as the juror administrator for the entire county, which will be done for years and years. Not that anybody else really has jury trust but us, but should there one need, maybe, this just solidifies that we'll leave like seven days' notice, gives us the authority to get the information from the Secretary of State. All this stuff we already do, the state has just really made it very advisable to get a jury plan into place. I guess it protects the county in case there's some outcry of jury mismanagement or jury tampering, which would be far-fetched, but that's basically, it's basically black and white. And like I said, it just does, solidifies what we're already doing.
So it puts it grabbing to the top of the...
It does.
It does because they, they visited this one so much in the legislative session.
Yes, they did.
Because they increased the jury pay along with...
Yes, correct, correct, and so they, I just got back from the clerk's conference back from September, just last month, and they really reiterated that they thought it was a great idea for counties to have this in place.
Approve the jury selection plan presented by the District Clerk.
All in favor? All right. Looks like we're down to line out a transfer and budget amendment.
Okay, there are a few. I'll do the line up transfer first. So the DA office into office supply, a thousand out of investigative expense. IT, did I say the amount? A thousand, sorry, and the IT department, other equipment under a thousand fifty-five dollars, out of equipment, a thousand to five thousand fifty-five dollars, he was just over in that line. Sheriff's Department, hires, five hundred out of education and prior training. You write squiggly trade, several sets of hires. Does it say worn secretly or recently?
Probably secretly, no, it's recently.
Recently on patrol units, it's secret. Can you read it, it's secretly, yes.
Girl's a bad day, work with me.
That quickly is just scratch. Health unit, contract labor, eight hundred dollars out of the physician's line, and this is to, there was a confusion when Rose first started, and even at the beginning of the line that Cooper was paid out of, so this is getting all that cleared up. And then library equipment, between a thousand and five thousand, fifty-three hundred dollars, out of audio, visuals, other equipment, new books that we're preparing this to continue to pay the final payment to King Carpet on their new carpet over there. Senior center, maintenance agreements, two thousand out of maintenance and repair, they were over budget. Precinct three, road and br, road and bridge, state, you cannot redirect. Operating supplies, five thousand out of road material, construction of five thousand, so that's the budget. Precinct four, maintenance repair miscellaneous, eight thousand out of part-time, equipment failures due to high hours, huge increase in labor costs. And then, of course, maintenance repair miscellaneous, five thousand out of utilities to reconcile the deficit balance in the account. That's all the line up transfers, and we'll go ahead and do the budget amendment.
Yes, ma'am.
There are four of them. The first one is county and justice court, doctor and medical fees, twenty-five hundred dollars. These are also fees that you really have no control over and don't, you can't really, no, how many people you're gonna have to send for mental incompetency and stuff like that. Use center, again, another line that's really kind of unforeseeable right now, is food, forty-five hundred dollars due to the increased inflation cost and the rise in the number of memberships. And a use center, the general liability insurance, thirty-five hundred dollars, it had increased this year because of the number of memberships and the inflation. And this one is the one placing the eighty-five thousand that we certified earlier into precinct one, capital line, over five thousand, for eighty-five thousand from Johnson County.
All right, Court to consider approve the council payable.
Payable is one million, four hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents.
Motion to pay bills.
All in favor? All in favor?